Program. He's learning more about that, and he's not recommending at this time that we necessarily spend any money until he further investigates what they're doing and their opportunity for doing more. So that's my latest report on that item. And I also learned today that the town is potentially going to be getting a grant to design kind of a natural solution-based, I guess, mitigation strategy at the bluff, the coastal bluff at Mitchell Field. So the town was approached by the Cumberland County Water and Soil Conservation Entity. Mary Ann Nave, our Conservation Commission Chair, knows more about it. And so I just got an email late this afternoon saying that Harpswell was one of the selected locations. The grant designs a solution, but it does not then pay for the actual solution. So it's similar to some of the other resiliency and sustainability work that we're doing on town roads. We're developing designs, but we're not necessarily moving forward with implementation or construction at this point. So, you know, I'll come back to the board when I have more information about what the town's obligations are with respect to that, but I think it's fairly minimal. Some staff time, but not too much, hopefully. Trying to think if there's anything else to report. I guess I do want to mention that the Comprehensive Plan Task Force is holding a public hearing on Saturday at Harpswell Community School at 10 o'clock. So this is a pretty big discussion for the town of Harpswell. It lays out a vision for the next 10- or 15-year period. There's been a lot of online discussion and public meetings that have been held periodically over the last several years, but I think this is an opportunity for people to weigh in before the town meeting on March 8th. So thank you very much.
Consent agenda.
I move the consent agenda, which is the election workers' appointments and authorization of the warrants.
Second.
Sign me. All in favor? All right. Vision appraisal update on revaluation.
My name is Debbie Turner, the Assessors' Agent for the Town of Harpswell. I would like you to introduce Steve Whalen, our Project Manager from Vision Solutions. This evening, we're going to be discussing the 2026 revaluation and what the taxpayers should expect in the next months or so. Next week, Vision is going to be sending out a introduction letter to all the residents. It's a summary of the key points of what he's going to be presenting tonight. The town is going to be sending out a separate letter that is going to be requesting information. Since this town is, due to the diversity of our community, we have rentals, we have seasonal, we have year-round residence. So when Vision does the data collection and they're measuring your home, your property, and nobody is home, we're not going to be leaving any door hangers because we don't want to be presenting that someone's not living there at the time. So with this information, it will help us contact you to find out what's the best way or when you're in town for us to come and visit you again type thing. So tonight, Steve's going to be doing a PowerPoint of our presentation, so please join me in welcoming Steve, the town manager, and the revale.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm the Project Manager for Vision Government Solutions, and we're doing a revaluation. So this is just a couple steps in what we're going to be doing out there. Maybe, there we go. So the revaluation steps, so we have the data collection, which will be starting in March, the market analysis, which would be analyzing all the current sales, valid sales within the last two years, analyzing them to come up with the valuation for the, all the properties, vacant, commercial, and residential properties. Then we do a field review, which is just kind of a quick drive-by using the property record card and seeing what we see on the property record card matches what we see at the property.
Like the old days.
And then, then we do the informal hearings. So once we send out the values to everybody in town, they'll have some information where you can go online or call us and set up an appointment, and you can talk to us about why the value's incorrect or something possibly that we missed. The data collection itself for the exterior, we're just looking at, you know, everything that we looked at before, the style of the property, different styles command different values, the quality, the condition, the story height of the different sections of the property, the materials used, the year built, making sure that the sizes of everything's correct and the land, and if there's any topo issues. And these things all add to the valuation, something small each. The data collection for the interior of the property would be quality, the condition, the bath bed count, the floor finishes for the walls and floors, the kitchen bath and style, updated or not updated possibly, heating with or without A/C, attics and basements finished or possibly not finished, and other amenities like fireplaces, elevators, extra kitchens, et cetera, they also add value to the property. So we'll be looking for all that. We're analyzing all the recent sales for the past two years, and that's valid sales. So any family members or zero value sales aren't considered valid. So that would just be between two people that don't eat, know each other, and typically aren't MLS, so anybody has the opportunity to buy the property. Gathering the data from the property, we're talking to any managers, developers, you know, local real estate people. We're getting information from everywhere we can, not only just the sales to help us come up with the correct values. And for the commercial, typically, we're analyzing the actual income, so that's an income and expense statement. So if you have a warehouse and you're renting it to somebody you don't know for $6 a foot, then that'll help us value that property because we'll know what the income's derived from that, for example. Once all the data's collected, we're checking, always checking for the accuracy of it. The appraisals determine the value of the land and the buildings. And the land is the same idea, we're looking at all the vacant land sales that happen only within Harpswell and making sure they're valid and seeing how much land that was involved. And then, of course, the location. So obviously, if it's on the water, it's worth a lot more than if it's not on the water. So factors like that are included. Establishing neighborhoods in that, you know, drives up how much you're paying or the land value, the site indexes. Sitability for the locations, a big factor, always in every town. Three approaches to value. The residential typically will use the cost and the sales. So the cost approach would be the, like a builder's manual telling us how much it is per square foot to build a house. The, the sales would be the recent sales within the last two years of similar properties. And the income approaches, like I was talking about, would be the rental for either a retail office or some sort of warehouse type thing, how much per square foot they're getting. So, and the incomes really only used for income-producing or commercial properties, not the residential properties. And then we're looking at, with the cost approach, the recent sales, like we talked about, with the vacant improved properties, just making sure that they're arms-length and valid, that we don't have any stragglers in there that we missed that we're going to use as our analysis. Local building costs, price per square foot of research, and we use, typically use a Marshals Swift, which is a builder's manual giving us the national sources. And then they're tested against any recent sales to make sure that we're close with the cost prices. The sales of older houses are analyzed, determined, we're always trying to turn, determine what the depreciation is. Of course, it depends on what type of condition they're in, and then we update those tables also. And the land models, they're created from any vacant land sales and then back to the location or the site of where it's located will determine how much the land's worth in that case, for residential and commercial land, for example. Sales comparison, similar, recent sales of vacant and improved properties, always researching and making sure they're arms-length. The data collection that we're going to be out there, starting the beginning of March, with people out in the field knocking on the doors and verifying what's already there or isn't there and adjusting that. Affecting the market value, you know, basically that one. And then sales are also used to set the land values in developing the, and we're developing the cap rates for the income, which are only, again, that's only used for commercial properties, would be cap rates and any type of rental information. And then the income approach, any recent commercial sales, since you don't have much of a commercial base, there'll be fewer of those, obviously, than the residential's, but we do look at them to make sure, again, they're arms-length and a valid sale. Income and expense forms are sent to every commercial property, and if it's not owner-occupied, then typically they can send it back telling us what they're renting them for, and we'll analyze that, and that'll produce some models that will apply to all of the, the commercial properties once we set up those rents, expenses, and vacancy. The capitalization rates are researched, national publications, and that would be NOI divided by the cap rate would come up with a commercial value for most times. And that's usually has to be a little bit bigger than 2,000 square feet, so some of the small ones we might not be able to do income approach on, but we'll see when we get there. Field review, we're looking at all the houses and commercial businesses one last time before we send out the values. So we do a drive-by using the existing property record card that's been updated from our person that's been out there listing the values or picking up the, what's new and not new. So we'll do that, and then we'll do comparable properties, checking that out. And then after we send out the value, everybody has the chance for an informal hearing, if they wish, to talk about how we came up with the value or what we might not know about. For example, maybe there's a topo problem or a water problem or something like that that we couldn't see at the time, so we could talk about that. And that would be during the informal process. And then after the informal process, everybody still has the right to do a formal appeal also after talking with us. And that's the overall way we do it.
Now, the, since COVID, the towns that you've done, is it a remarkable upsurge like we're expecting in this town?
You're talking in value?
In value.
Yeah.
Double, triple?
I'm not exactly sure what the sales are showing now, but I'd have to go out in the limelight and say double's not that much anymore.
Yeah.
Of course, it depends on when the last time you did it was. So we have some towns closer to Massachusetts, New Hampshire, Portsmouth, New Hampshire was updating it every year. So obviously, it wasn't doubling it every year, but it was quite a few years in a row it was 10%. So it was going up 10% a year for every single property, every single residential. And the commercials typically go up at a slower pace because they might have long-term contracts with rents and things like that, so they're kind of locked in at maybe a lower rate. But the residential's were increasing at 10% per year. So if you haven't done it for a long time, 50% is not that much anymore.
Yeah.
And that'll all wash out with the sales. So we'll, we'll see what the real numbers are once we analyze the last two years of sales.
So the, the field work is going to, is going to wait until some of the snow melts?
A little bit. I think we're looking about two more weeks, and we'll have people out in the field. And they'll have IDs and letters, and they'll be registered with the town hall and the police. So if you, you know, if you don't want to let them in, you know, iffy, then don't. And if they can do the outside anyways, then they can get back to you with a letter or try to do an inside inspection at a later date.
I'm sure once it starts, the phone calls will be coming.
It always is.
Yeah. Pins and needles.
Yeah.
I'm just glad you're doing it. The selectmen used to have to do that.
Oh.
We're still, we're still the assessors, and Deb is our agent.
Right.
And we were, when we were doing it, it was exceptionally inaccurate. We, you know, windshield assessing, they call it driving around with the cars, and well, that house, I think, is worth maybe a couple hundred thousand and maybe that. And old Aunt Gertie lives there, we're going to be, you know, assessor low. So you guys doing it makes it very accurate and...
I, I think in this case, I think it will be because it'll be a full measure list, meaning we'll be knocking on the door and walking around the property.
Yeah.
You know, you wouldn't be able to see if they had put in a ditch or a wood deck or something in the middle of the back of the house because you wouldn't be seeing the back of the house. So this way, with a full walk-around, it makes it more fair, and then the people that have what they have are paying their fair share, and if you don't have what you have, then you're paying less. So I think it, a little more equity in the, in the situation.
And also, so everyone knows, if we don't do it accurately, the state will do it and charge us for it anyway. So, I mean, it's better that we do it ourselves.
That's the same in a lot of states.
Yeah.
Same in New Hampshire. They'll, they'll force you to do it, and if you don't do it, they'll just take out, take it out of the money that we're going to give you. So you're going to pay, you pay for it one way or another.
Right.
And if you refuse entry as a homeowner and you don't allow your people to come on your property, it just takes away any chance of an abatement later. Yeah, right there.
To a point. Basically, if someone...
Do you want to go to the microphone?
If, if you refuse to have someone come inside your home, when you request for an abatement, we will ask to come inside anyway.
Okay.
So we'll do it that way, and then we'll make corrections. And if we see that things needed to be corrected and the abatement doesn't fall through, then it will be done that way. So if you do refuse and you do request an abatement, we will have to come and look at the interior because we cannot base it on estimate during an abatement. An abatement is, an abatement also is for the total value. So the land might be high and the building might be low, but the total value might be accurate. So again, the abatement cannot be on a one specific thing. It has to be the overall package type thing, so. And I did also want to indicate that when we start in March, we're going to start on 123 at the Brunswick Line and work south. And I'm going to be working with Jim, our IT person, and I'm going to be putting on our town website anything that has to do with Vision, the letters that you're going to be receiving. This PowerPoint will be on there, things from main revenue and other IAAO talking about revales or anything. So if you get anything in the mail that you do not see attached to our website, it's not us. So I'm going to try to make sure that everything that Vision sends out is on the website and keep up to date of the, the people that will be coming out to visit you. I will have their name, their vehicle information. They'll have a letter on them saying that, and it's signed by me, saying that they're allowed on the property, that they're representing the town, basically. So make sure they follow through pleasantries and stuff. Let's see, what else is there? I think in all, in all, Vision's going to be doing four letters. First one, like I mentioned at the beginning, is that the intro letter, letting you know that we're coming out and what's to expect. The next letter is if we can't get ahold of you to do an interior inspection, we will send you a copy of your property card and see if you can make changes of anything that is wrong on your property card and send that back to them so they think and update the data that way. Then the third letter is the new valuation letter of your new assessment. And the final letter is if there was a formal meeting and there were some changes, they will let you know if they made changes or if they didn't make changes before you get your tax bills in August of 2026.
So Debbie, the schedule will be on the website because I think people will be interested in how they're going to move through the town.
Yeah, yeah. Basically, we'll let you know what sections of towns we'll be working at. Like I said, we're going to start at 123, and they're going to go back map by map by map by map. So that's why I said, due to the diversity of our town, not everybody's going to be home. So by getting this extra information that we're requesting, we can somehow get ahold of you to set up a scheduled time. Yep?
Oh, you want to... Elaine, go to the mic, please, so everybody in the world can hear you. I know, I know, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Yep, sorry.
That's all right.
Interior inspection.
State your name before you start.
Okay. Elaine Bauer, South Harpswell. So the question is, for an interior evaluation, can we set up an appointment? Because my husband works from home, so...
So what they do is they're going to knock on the door, and if they can't do the interior at that time, they're going to ask if it's okay to do the exterior, and then you're going to be put in the file of reviewing, requesting to set up an appointment, basically.
Okay, fine.
So one way or another, you'll be hearing from me or Vision to do an interior inspection at your convenience. On these, I should say, not conveniently, we're going to try to set a day, like a Friday. A lot of people come and visit on Fridays and stuff like that, so we might have the person come, have a whole schedule of a certain area being done on a Friday, and the following week, another section. Because we don't want someone to be at Potts Point and have to go to West Cundy's Point within a half an hour. It's not going to work. So we're going to try to schedule people in certain areas. So it might be, we're going to try to make it as convenient, but we don't want our field people all over the place either. So. Hope that answered your questions, and I hope everybody participates in this because the better the data that we collect is, the better the data we know for everybody is accurate information for their fair share of taxes of the town, so.
I suspect our mill rate will go way down after, after this.
It matters on the, but I can't do the mill rate. It's more the town budget of the school, the county, and the municipality and stuff, so. I only put the value. I do the value, and then we apply the mill rate to it, so. Yep. Oh, and when the field workers out there, like I just said, the assessing doesn't set the mill rates. So they're not going to know what their value's going to be on their property. They're just collecting the data for the property. So if you ask them about, what do you think my value's going to be, they're not going to know because they're not doing that. Somebody else does that. So they're just collecting the data, making a lot of notes.
And the implementation is with the 2026 tax bills, correct?
Correct.
So it's likely to be...
Yeah.
...August of 2026 when those tax bills go out?
Yep. Yep. If you're somebody that, I was going to also mention, if you're somebody that has a building permit going on, you're going to be visited by Tim, our person in code enforcement reviewing your construction. And then this spring, if you got your building permit prior to April 1st of 2025, I will be coming out and visiting your property and getting your assessment for this year's 2025 using the old tables. And Vision will be going map by map, visiting too. So they're going to be gathering data, but they might have to come back and visit you again in 2026 because they're going to assess what is done as of April 1st, 2026. So. So are there any other questions?
Keep going, four more minutes.
Four more minutes. I talked about the website, talked about...
Well, we have a public hearing.
Sarah is one of the field people that's going to be going out there, but I don't know, what else to say. You go ahead.
So during the informal hearings, when we send out the, the tax, the new tax or the new estimated value of your property, you can, you can dial an 800 number and make an appointment that way, or you can go online and do your appointment 24 hours a day yourself. And then when you call, you have, it's been running about 50/50. Half the people want to do a phone appointment, so we can set up a time, and we'll talk to you on the phone. You don't actually have to come somewhere, and the other half of the people could be in person. So it seems like when we started doing that during COVID, it caught on, and we're probably around at least 50/50 now, that half the people are requesting just a phone interview, so to speak, and explaining it to them instead of having to come somewhere. So that seems to be working out pretty well for us.
Okay.
So there's multiple options. And technically, you don't have to come at all. You could skip our piece and actually go right to the abatement process also, technically. But we'd, you know, we'd like to know what we did right or wrong, and then we can make adjustments to, to your property and then send out a new value to you at a later date.
All right, thanks. All right, any other questions for Debbie and Steve? I don't think so. They will in two years.
They will.
Not my fault.
We need a picture now, gray hair later.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, listen.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks. It's close enough to 6:30 to open up a public hearing regarding Curtis Memorial Library, the secret ballot article. So, does anyone want to speak to Curtis Memorial Library?
I just want to give a little context. So this article is on the ballot. When people request a ballot in advance of the town meeting, there are the positions, the elected officials' positions that are, they can vote on, and then there's one referendum article, and that is for Curtis Memorial Library. So we're required to have a public hearing because it will not be discussed at the annual town meeting on the floor. So this is the required public hearing. We posted notices all around town, and I do know that the executive director or the library director is here tonight, Elizabeth Dusset, and perhaps she wants to give a little bit of summary of services and cardholders in Harpswell and all those wonderful things.
Really appreciate that. I'm Liz Dusset. I'm the library director at Curtis Memorial Library. I have been here many times before. I'm not sure I have too much that's new to say. I did bring some information I thought you might like to see. It's a one-year summary of the Bookmobile and some of what, now, keep in mind, this is for all of the work that the Bookmobile does, not just Harpswell. I think if you were out last summer, it would be hard to have missed it. And it comes regularly to the town offices in the wintertime, and depending on demand, it goes to the two libraries, Cundy's Harbor and Ors Island. So that has gone really well, and it's great. The electric Bookmobile's worked fabulously well, which we were all a little nervous about. It's a lot of heavy weight in it. The other thing I brought was a list of the library services.
Thank you.
Sometimes people ask me what services we provide, and the list just gets longer and longer and longer, and so I started writing it down. Does make things a little bit easier to understand how much we provide for the community. The other thing that I started doing a couple of years ago was putting together a summary of some of the services that Harpswell gets, which they don't pay for. These are things that generally we pay for through fundraising, through the endowment, through people making major gifts to the library, and how many of those services, like what would it cost if you had to go buy it yourself? And then is a library card required to use it? So some of the services we have, you can just walk in the library and use it. Other services, obviously, you need a card to use it. So let me... And the perennial question. This is a summary of how many library cards are used in Harpswell, Curtis Memorial Library. The way to interpret this is, when you get the number, since the beginning of each year, how many people have used a card? So the further back you go, obviously, the numbers get higher because it's counting more people. It's not declining in use, it's just counting a bigger period of time, so. And those are usually the key things that people want to know. The library has come back full bore from COVID. We have as many people walking through the door now as we did before COVID, which is due to some of the amazing programs that we provided, like last summer, we did the Robert McCloskey exhibit, which was huge, and it was a lot of fun, and it brought people in from literally all over the world, which was kind of fun. We managed to hit every single continent except for Antarctica.
Oh, wow. Impressive.
Yeah, it was, it was kind of fun. We had guestbooks, and so people would sign in and put comments in. So things are going really well there. We'll hope they just continue, and I'm happy to take any questions you have.
Just a couple of things. So the appropriation amount is staying the same? It's been the same for the last three years, I believe?
This is the third year of the three-year MOU.
Yeah. And can you talk a little bit about the collaboration with the local libraries?
Yeah.
Orson Cundy's? I think that came up during the Budget Committee, and it was good to hear kind of what, what that's like.
Yep. They, we take the Bookmobile down there. That has depended on the use, the, the community, like sometimes if you go and nobody shows up, then you wait and go another day and see if that's better. We also provide interlibrary... We also provide interlibrary loan for the smaller, for the libraries in Cundy's Harbor and Ors Island. So they can basically get books through interlibrary loan by going through Curtis. So we pay for all of that. Programming, we do it based on demand. So we've done a lot of programming around sustainable projects, like sustainable crafting. And we've done some work around the fisheries, how, how people can build small businesses around that. It's sort of based on demand. So we're happy anytime somebody has a program idea, we're there. You just have to raise your hand and tell us.
And the library of things, I think, is amazing. It runs the gamut from all kinds of things that people can check out and use, equipment. I mean, you know better than I would.
Yeah, it's, it's such an interesting concept and people are usually so energized by it. It's, part of the collection now is made up of items. So what we try and do from a sustainability perspective is look at things that people might buy and only use once. So instead of buying it, using it once and then sticking it in your garage and then eventually maybe selling it, we have built this whole collection of items that people can come in and borrow from the library. So a hot commodity is a small wood chipper. Another one is a house washer. We have small things like crock pots. We have, oh gosh, it just runs the gamut. We have musical instruments. And basically you can come in and try any of them for three weeks, just like a book. And if it's something that you enjoy, then maybe you go home and you do buy yourself one, maybe you sort of say, eh, not my thing. But it's a great way to not put more purchasing into the environment. It's probably the best way to say it. It's, interestingly enough, the age group that loves that are like the 20 to 30-year-olds. Probably because sustainability is a hot topic for them.
Thank you.
Liz, I just wanted to point out too, I often will tell, we see kids and families here, obviously, and, and sometimes costs can be a factor for kids not getting out to certain locations. And I am not sure how to get this word out more, except that I'm, I'm working on it for the kids that I interact with and their parents. But I mean, there's discounted tickets to the Botanical Gardens. I mean, I don't know how many places, but it's just a great plug to be able to get that word out there to the families that, you know, would make an opportunity where one didn't exist before.
Yeah, you, you guys are doing my work for me tonight. Thank you. We, we actually, one thing I always try and remind people of is we have museum passes and they're not just in Brunswick because there's not, there are museums in Brunswick, but not a million of them. We have museum passes for down in Boston. So if you want to go to the Science Museum or the Aquarium, we have passes that you can come and get for that. Sometimes they're free. Sometimes it's like half off a ticket. That's a really good one. Another thing we do is a lot of programming that kids really enjoy and it's totally free. You don't need a card for that. Yeah, it's interesting because every time the economy goes bad, usage at the library just goes crazy because it's so many free resources. And it kind of, you know, there's movies, there's DVDs. We have digital download books, which in Harpswell, I think is a nice thing because you don't have to leave your house to get books. We also have digital magazines. Yeah, it's kind of gotten to the point where it, you could never leave your house and still use the library. So.
I don't see the Zoom platform up there. Do we have anybody? Jim? I don't see anybody's hand up.
Oh, there's a hand. Samsung? Or is that your mouse, Jim?
I think that's his mouse. Technology.
Oh, we also have people who can help you with your technology. We, we have librarians that do free tech, technology meetups with people.
Oh, cool.
I've got a 12-year-old grandson.
That's all you need. It'd be better if he was six, but yeah.
Anybody want to speak to the library? Yeah.
Good evening. Bob Gudrow, Gunpoint Road here in Harpswell. I actually have been asked through HA to do multiple demonstrations for the library and I will commend the library on going out on a limb to provide these other services that are very usable. And whether it's a wrench, whether it's a wood chipper, I would tell you it's phenomenal and I would recommend. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. It's good to hear from people who are using it.
Anybody else before we close the hearing? All right, at this point, we'll close the public hearing.
Well, that was quick. Thank you.
All right, we good? All right, Plan for Mitchellfield Administrative Building.
I want to say on the outset that I'm not a member of the group. I have been advising them on things like what's allowed in the Shoreline Residential Zone and whatever my knowledge is of pipes underground and that kind of thing. But I don't think it goes to the extent where I need to recuse myself. I'll leave that up to you guys, but I, you know, I have no, as a matter of fact, they, their plans don't exactly align with my dream of the Mitchellfield waterfront. So I mean, I really don't.
Just a question, David, are you still involved with the West Harpswell Library? Are you on that board?
Yes.
Because they're, the library is suggested in the materials we got as both an entity that might use the space and also might be a fiscal sponsor for that space.
Maybe, yeah.
So there is that connection.
There is, but I don't have a big problem with it.
Just for clarity, just for clarity of the relationships.
Thanks. Are you speaking first here, Bob?
Why not?
Should be able to get that on the camera.
Angle it. Camera's up in the corner.
The camera right there.
Can't see it. Do you want to put it over? Want me to scoot over and?
Let's see if Jim has a suggestion.
Yep, I think Jim's working on it back there.
I think it's just so far away.
Just, just widen it out a little.
Up there, I'm not sure it's going to get close enough to see it.
So you can't zoom, you don't think?
The cameras, that's the one over in the corner that's up there, that camera. That camera over there, that's what you're seeing there.
The one in the corner wouldn't see the front of it and I can see the front of it. That's weird.
We're going to hear from Jim.
It's fine. Nobody does. Good evening, Bob Gudrow, again, Gunpoint Road. Thank you, Mr. Chair and select board members for the opportunity to discuss tonight. The multiple names, but the administration building number 126, so on. Currently, we're trying to call this the Mitchellfield Recreational Center. The discussion tonight is going to be twofold. I would like to provide, and I believe you've gotten the email with the download for our proposal. Is that correct?
We did, yes.
Thank you. To go over the proposal and to go over some misinformation that's been had or been out there, and I'd like to at least get it out there so that we can all discuss it as we move forward. Naturally, I think one of the biggest things is that we would like to first make a quick overall general statement in that the common sentiment here is, our committee is, don't, it don't always seem to go that you don't know what you, you've got till it's gone. They paved paradise and put it in the parking lot. I think we've got to bring that home and understand, once it's gone, it's gone. And so let's be prudent about where we go and how we've done it. And I know this has been 20 years in the making, but it still doesn't mean we should be short-sighted. So let's just make sure we have our thinking and hearing available tonight and let's at least see what we can get through. That said, I think the select board actually made a very bold statement when they hired MCAG to do a study. And that study then proved out, there's a 50% possibility that there's something of value there. The value is what we need to get through and this committee has worked diligently. I will tell you, there's been upset and anarchy within our committee. We had to go through the holidays trying to feder out where we're going and what we're doing. People were missing and such. We came right close to the January 15th meeting with a presentation and we backed off because we thought we needed to do it right. That, the timing of 30 days has been extremely helpful and I appreciate your sensitivity to allowing us that timeline. I think you've seen with the proposal in front of you, a very completeness and that is what you wanted. And I think that's what we're trying to deliver. So you've stepped out of what the Mitchell Committee has been saying for years. Tear it down, tear it down. It has no value. So to say that you've put money towards the, the MCAG report and out of the MCAG report, they equally say, there's something there you shouldn't let go into being a paved parking lot. Let's be prudent. So here we are tonight, providing that essence of where we think we can go. So again, I think what we're probably trying to ask is that you look at the warrant very carefully. And I'll come back to this, but the warrant basically says demolition and remediation. We very much would like to have the word demolition be selective demolition because you may not be taking down the whole building. Because the environmental report basically states to pay the highest price for building 126 removal. And yet it's, it's the highest price. They actually say that. It's the higher price. And we have a means and methods that will save you real money. So we will, we'll go through that. So to go through the plan real quick, like I'd, I'd say that we've addressed uses, we've addressed budgets, we've addressed water and sewer. We go through a competitive bid process to put it out to bid if it gets to that point. Instead of just saying who's on first and in favoritism. We've, we've looked to fundraise throughout the process of the remediation and we looked to fundraise all the way up until it's done. But I think we've shown within the parameters of the plan that there's a concept that is fluid. We would create a 501(c) nonprofit, board of directors, and so on. There's a cost in operational revenues. There's a turnover of the plan is to turn over the bathrooms with our private money building them to the town to maintain and oversee throughout after we're done. We, we surely would appreciate if the actual town stepped up and provided some funding for both the water and sewer. That will be, that are in our budget, but it surely seems to be that this is a town asset, not necessarily a private asset. So that's, that's to be discussed. We went out and tried to talk with towns and other towns to understand how their alcohol provision operates within a town-owned property that is subleased. And we think we have an opportunity that can allow you a direction that allows alcohol because it's a major funding under weddings or some other events that might happen there. So let me go real quick, like through the plan, and I hope they can zoom in and maybe I can take the microphone over there. So the, the plan is basically if you take the shape of the administration building as is, this used to be the fire barn. This used to be the kitchen and living quarters for the fire department. This used to be, well, the boiler room was here and this used to be an administrative park as is. The foundation of the building is not being taken away. There's this section here would be removed. This would be the main feature in which the recreational piece of the center would be ours. And the reason is that the addition here is a stage outbound towards the water. It does comply from everything I've been able to review. So that if you were to be sitting in here in the middle, you'd be looking out at the stage, this is a glass wall, and the water would be beyond and actually the boat ramp and, and the pier. And I can give you a little bit better understanding of that in a cross section, if you don't mind, real quick, like. If you were sitting in the middle of the garage right now and actually the lead paint chips would be falling on you, the boat would be in the way and, and it'd look pretty darn grungy. But tomorrow, when it gets cleaned up and it has new paint on it, I call it lipstick, but it's new paint, and you're sitting there and you're looking out at the performers and you're seeing the water in the background, I think this, this becomes a one-of-a-kind facility, this close and this opportunistic for a lot of other people that have gained interest as we've gone through this plan. So I ask you to have vision. And my vision, and I'm sorry, I'm going to give you a little story here, but my vision is you're sitting there, it's been a rain event, so the band is actually playing at this facility. It's 8:15 and the sun starts to creep through because the clouds have opened up in the westerly sunset and the sun's coming off of the water into this facility and the band is playing its last, last number. I would think my face is probably orange because of the sun reflection, but I can hear the music. The air is coming off the ocean. I think it's one of those gleeful moments that we all appreciate. So I want you to see that vision from my perspective as well. What's, what's more important to me is the next morning, two pickleball play, I mean, four pickleball players are playing inside the, inside this facility. Harpswell Land Trust Summer Camp Program, the kids are coming in underneath the canopy. Next door in the small conference room, JW is typing on his laptop with his headphones on and there's another group on the front of the meeting space, meeting to talk about a book review. I think that's a full-service property. I think that is where we've come through with all these, all this time to find and identify uses that will be sustainable for seasons a year and continue into the future. That's what's been important about this. So then what the piece of building we're taking down would then be additional picnic area and there's actually some covered awnings or canvases. And this end of the building would be the, the public bathrooms, water and sewer. Sorry about that. I don't know if you can all see this, but again, this is elevations. This is from the rear, this upper one is from the rear upland side of, of the park or, or Mitchellfield. So the, the doors that are, the existing garage doors there would be taken out. They've become full view garage doors so that you could shut them and, and have your, your event inside. This is a smaller conference area. This is the new picnic area. This is the bathrooms. So on the front side, if you're on the, you're back to the water looking at the building, you'd see a glass wall that encompasses the stage. Behind that is actually the old fire station. And here is the meeting. Behind that is naturally the old fire station, and here is the meeting, general, uh, small meeting area, picnic area, bathrooms. Does anybody have any questions on that at this point? So, um, so we are still out there soliciting parties of interest. It seems to be growing as we get into this more, and we also are trying to work with organizations that already exist at, in, in the town, or that would need, or currently use this facility. So our outreach has not stopped. So I'd actually like to show some, some details on probably the bad press that has come from the Mitchell Field, and I'd like to go through that just so that we have an understanding. So we've said, we've been told that the building is needed for parking. We've been told there's parking problems. We've been told there's, uh, needs a better view. We, we've been told that the environmental costs, you know, you should tear it down. So let me go through the parking. Number one, the building's 130 foot long. It stands 12 foot high on one side and 19 feet on, on the other side. The view corridor that it displaces at Mitchell Field adds up to 1.46% of 119 acres. Little over 1% of the view is blocked by the building. I'm not sure I can get out of bed and see that that's gonna be a differential downer for this property. So I just want you to take, make sure it, 1% this building blocks the view. So I, I don't know that that's a big item. I, I, there's a lot that we can worry about, and I'm not sure 1% is it. We equally, though, take ha, uh, 40% of the building down to improve that view. So you're down to 1% after we've removed the middle section. I'd say that's pretty accommodating. I'd also say that it's pretty inconsequential, but it's important because it's been said the building should come down. Let's talk about parking. So we've had somebody on committee go through all the Mitchell Field committee reports to find out, is there a problem? And what we've come up with is, no. No. What we've come up with is congratulatory remarks to finding and being able to take care of 500 cars for the lobster boat races. So if you can park 500 cars, why is parking a problem? We equally get to the point that we talk about the building must come down. We need the parking, we're short of parking. The building coming down will allow you seven to 13 spaces additional only. Does that make sense? Is this the appropriate thing to spend almost $340,000 of environmental work to take the building down to create seven to 13 spaces? Just think of it, the building's 130 feet long, standard parking space is 10 foot wide by 20 foot deep, 10 divided into 113, 13 max, which doesn't make sense, there's not a parking problem. There's been a parking study done by Mitchell Field, and they determined there was not a problem. They asked to print the final report, and it was denied that they could print the final report. So let's be careful, if there's a nothing burger, there's a nothing burger. Let's be prudent to doing the right thing. So then we get to the environmental report, and I'm sorry if I'm a little anal retentive about this, and maybe those aren't the right words to use this, but I've probably done 50 environmental reports, either paid for them myself or had to review them during my construction lifetime. So I do know environmental reports. And what is very unnerving to me in this report is they basically give you two options, uh, uh, 2A and 3A. 2A is a lead removal, slag removal in the boiler, and a PCB removal. Prudent outcomes, understand the cost. The second proposal, 3A, provides you the slag removal, the PC removal, PCB removal, and does not take out the lead, but demos the building. At I say, a cost that is currently represented roughly $230,000 on the high side, but what's being not understood by the environmentalists, and you need to know this, is a demolition is a building, that doesn't mean it's the foundation. So that means you still have a slab-on-grade per the environmental report. We also know that there's been a proposal that the town has at least verbally gotten of at least costing of $200,000 to remove that building. But let's be careful, because you did not take the lead out in 3A. The lead still is in the building under that removal process. So if, if the $200,000 estimate that's been had or been talked about now has to take a lead-based demolition to a licensed lead dump in Maine, that's Bangor. So I bet you that $200,000 wasn't in consideration to removing lead-based materials, meaning block, brick, steel, roof, whatever. So let's be careful. If the number is really 340,000 on the high side to remove, and it's been recommended in this report without legitimacy, that we spend that money versus possibly, I think, 150,000 on the low side to remove the lead, do the slag removal, and to, um, take care of the PCBs. I will tell you, PCBs are very expensive to deal with, even though we're talking about a half-inch caulk around a window. Two windows and three doors is $70,000 in this report to remove it. The reason is, there's usually a minimum fee, and it has to go to Michigan, Wisconsin, sorry, Wisconsin, whatever, it's up there. It's not local, and so there's minimums that get in, involved in this whole thing. The outcome of this is that what we have shown you on this plan is, by taking the center core out, that's where the two windows and the door that have the PCBs in, that under their report, they basically initiate the fact that, um, because they can't control the removal around the penetration, meaning the windows and the doors, that they recommend that the whole expensive, more remediation be done. I don't know where that comes from, because there's, when the report starts, it says the town's recommendation is to reuse the property, but yet at the end is, it's removed. We jump to one to the other very quickly, and it's not consistent. And I say that in that you can go to the report on page, page five, says the recommendations that the current owner plans to redevelop the property for visible and commercial usage. But yet you go to page, um, page 12, and the outcome is, the alternate 2A would require reconstruction of the building. So there's two windows and a door, and we're considering probably a mason for those two repairs around the door, windows and the doors at approximately 1,600, so maybe $5,000 repair, but instead, they make the recommendation that alternate 3A is taken on. You jump from a $95,000 cost to $340,000. If you take our plan, we can save you approximately anywhere from about, um, $153,000 to $208,000, and I'd say that's worth consideration. So not, not to belabor that point, I just think that's worth talking through a little bit more, when this plan, saving the building, can save the town money in remediation costs. And maybe that is handled by grants, so it's not something that is necessary, but I think it's formally worth your interest. So, um, our directive naturally is to ask for you to approve us to continue, allow us to continue. I think it's important that we can, are allowed to get out there to our community, because we've been basically a small committee, and small committees don't necessarily reference everything. So the, so the plan could change if we get out to our community and have time to resource more understandings. And I think it's important that the warrant be act, correct, in that it's a selective demolition and a remediation versus a $200,000 demolition project. So I would, I would ask for, um, an approval to move forward, and I appreciate your time. Thank you very much for your sustainability on listening to me.
Bob, um...
Sorry?
Under, um, I guess it's page two on the summary of your report, um, it says, uh, VRAP certification is likely to take one year, or maybe more. Are you asking, um, you were asking for a year to pull, to get rid of the, the toxic materials and, um, and, and then put it before town meeting next year?
So basically, if, if, um, how do I politely say this? If you read, read the environmental report, as soon as it said 50 parts per, um, 50 parts of, um, above for PCBs, the town has to remediate. Second area owners cannot, so we cannot take the building until you remediate. You cannot transfer the building. You could transfer the building if it was just lead, but you can't transfer as owners until you get it cleaned up. So it's your grant money that has to foresee that work. So we can't take it until you get it done. So I would imagine to get a grant, to get competitively bid, to put the work in order, and to, and to then to get a VRAP from the state is at least a year. That's why I'm saying that.
Can, can I clarify what you just said?
Sure. I'm sorry if I didn't say it correctly.
Well, no, I just not following exactly. And you said you can't transfer the building to someone else. The town is gonna continue to own this building as far as I read your proposal, so what...
Correct.
What are you saying there?
At 50 parts per mil, um, PPG, is that the state DEP will not let you transfer a building.
But what's the transfer?
Meaning you can't give it away. You can't, you can't even, um, sign a lease with us right now. Meaning the Mitchell Field Recreational Center, until it's remediated, until the PCBs come out of the building, nobody but the town can own it.
But we're gonna continue to own it.
We would lease it from you, but you can't sign a lease...
But we don't need to sign a lease.
That's correct. You can let it sit.
No, no, no.
Sorry.
I'm not talking about sitting it.
Okay.
That, my understanding of what came out from the MCAG was that if it were to be reused, renovated, that would be part of what the entity who was going to renovate it put in their budget.
I mean, it is not something we are considering.
Okay, but that's not, that's not a, it's not required that the town pay for the remediation?
You're correct, but, uh, no legal entity would, would put you in a lease position to take on that. I mean, no legal person would advise you to take, sign a lease to take on that responsibility, because then you own the remediation and whatever else comes up. I hear what you're saying, exactly.
So when, is the timing of the lease is also a question?
There's, correct.
Okay, but I'm talking about where the money comes from.
Yeah.
For a remediation, if this were to go forward.
It is not our money.
That's not your position, that it's your money?
Correct.
Not your money? Okay, but...
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Well, Christie seems to think there's grants available for that.
Not for much.
Well, the report, the MCAG report says there's a cap of 50,000, at least in this particular grant that DEP was talking about.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, the last thing I worked on was Greater Portland, MCAG through DE, D E, D C, that was a grant founded, and, um, we were able to remediate a building for, I think, Avesta Housing. But it is, yes, there's not a lot of money out there. Any other questions that it could help anybody with? Thank you very much for your time.
Spike Hible, Harpsell Neck. Thank you, Bob, for going through the whole thing. I said this back in January when I was last up here, that, uh, I appreciated the design, the concept of the design itself, um, and the intent behind it. I think, I think having seen the report now, it seems overly adventurous, and to me, this is my own personal feeling, um, but as I told you in January, I've gotten together with Helen Norton and Dave Zamarowski, who can't be here tonight, and we have just tried to pull together a vision for the waterfront in particular, but the entire Mitchell Field as a holistic concept, which does not include the admin building. And I make note of a couple things from the report. I don't wanna sit, stand up here and, and, and dig holes and report, but I wanna just point out some things that, that occurred to me, just reading through it several times. The first thing is that, uh, there are a number of expressions about the waterfront, the, the place on the waterfront that, that the admin building occupies. And to quote the report, "It's a piece of paradise, it's beautiful views, it's stunning location, and it's a beautiful area." That is how the waterfront is described by, uh, the group that's going forward, trying to go forward. My question to everybody is, why would you, why would you continue to allow a large building structure right on top of what is the most valuable real estate on Mitchell Field, and one of the most valuable pieces of real estate that the town owns, which is the entire field? So I understand where the, the admin building group is trying to come, is coming from, but there's another way to look at it, that there is no mandate to move forward with, with keeping the building at this point. We've worked on it for so long to try and figure out what to do with it. And as Christie stated last week, it, it just keeps getting more and more expensive, and the town has the funding to do what needs to be done now, and grants would certainly help reduce that cost. Why do we keep picking away at Mitchell Field? The survey of 2022, which the report references, very carefully picks through the data, which, which is their right to do, but essentially, and in their own words, they use the word murky, the decision whether, the, the opinion as to whether to keep or remove the building, it's basically a wash. It's 50/50 one way or the other. They're absolutely correct. The bathrooms are, are, are a big deal for Mitchell Field. If you, if, I went through all the comments from the, um, from the survey, and I, I had collated all the different things that people talked about, bathrooms are way up there. I'm not sure we need bathrooms with showers. I've never been to a boat launch yet that has anything other than nice, uh, pit-style toilets that are, you know, engineered to stay clean and stay, um, they smell clean in, in any way, they work. You go to Mirpoint, you use those over there, they're, they're just perfect. Do we need showers? Some people have said we need, they would be, like to have showers. Some people have said we'd like to have showers for our dogs. That's not funny, that's, that's what, it's in the comments. You know, we'd like to have a place that, you know, we automatically fills bowls for our dogs to drink water. I'm a dog owner, I love my dog, I love taking her to Mitchell Field, but I don't need all those things. So I think that's, uh, a little bit of, uh, there's some hyperbole going on there, and the cost of, to the town, if they, if the town is required to pay for the water and septic... of, to the town, if they, if the town is required to pay for the water and septic, you know, that's what the town's going to, you know, may have to pay for. Because you got to have water and septic to run a bathroom that has water, you know, running water. But that's, that's a lot of detail. One of the things that I, that I noticed, and Bob was just sort of finished up with it a little bit, was the.
Keeping the overall footprint. Is that still on here?
Did you hit the button down below?
It'd be bright green.
There we go. There we go. Keeping the existing footprint of the building and with the suggestion on page 18 that there's a possibility that might have, you know, in the future be used. What does that mean? Does that mean building structure within the, the area that is between the bathroom? In other words, filling the building back in again? That's something that is being left, you know, as an open question, you know, there. In other words, this is not a, I recognize that this is a, a design concept, but generally I think if that's the direction it goes, then you, they're saying, but we could go So I don't think there's a mandate to move ahead with this and I don't think the town should be, I think the town should focus on whether demolition is the right thing or not. And the warrant language certainly does that. The last thing I, well, and the other aspect of this I'd like to just bring up is that I'm no longer on the Mitchell Field Committee, but when I was, we never got a visit from this group to talk about the building concept, the design, anything about parking, nothing. We never heard from them. They came directly to you. And the Mitchell Field Committee has worked for years to make recommendations to this select board about how Mitchell Field is used, how it's developed, how we maintain it, all those things and done a great job with it. And they recommended, after a lot of consideration and a lot of talk back and forth, that the building should be removed. It was recommended eight to one that the building be taken down. The big reason for that is that we're going to build a boat launch. And if the building, the building takes up a big piece of real estate in the middle of the waterfront and it's not, it's not for parking, it's not taking the building down for parking. That is a complete misrepresentation of why the building needs to go away. The building needs to go away because it's taking up the most valuable recreational space at Mitchell Field, which is that waterfront, which is pretty hammed in by a building, a road, and, you know, it, it, there's only a small section of green space that people can use. So I think, I think that the concept of the building being taken down is, is to get more parking is absolutely incorrect. The Mitchell Field Committee worked on, on ideas for satellite parking so that people, parking could be spread around, around on Mitchell Field to get people different opportunities to use field in different ways. And that's what I mean by a holistic concept from our perspective, which is that, you know, Mitchell Field is, is an entire entity and, and most things end up at the waterfront in the end. And we think the building is, is plugging up the works, to put it in simple terms. My last statement, my last comment is that I spent, starting in the 1980s, I've spent a fair amount of time working on capital campaigns for various things. And I think the select board and the staff should do their, do some homework on exactly what they're suggesting will be ways to raise money from federal funds to state, grants from state organizations, a variety of unstated charitable trusts and, and another trust. In other words, that list is one suspect in my mind. And I've talked to some other people that I know about, you know, look at this list of potential funding sources and how they're, they're going forward with it and, and what do you think of it? And the, the general reaction is, this is not a good plan. It's, it's, it's a list of things you could do, but it's not really, it, it doesn't have its feet solidly on the ground as far as I'm concerned. So I think that's something you should take a strong look at. What's the fiscal ability of, of the organization to do what they want to do? A million and a half and by the time you get done messing around, maybe it's $2 million. That's a lot of money to try and raise. And the last piece I would say is that there is a statement in the, on page 21 of the plan that says that should the LLC dissolve, the town gets the building. So if the LLC, you know, folds up its tent, either partway through the process or just after the process, the town is going to end up holding the bag. And I don't think that's what we really want to do. It's a big, it's a, it, there's maintenance, there's, there's expenses involved with that. I look at the glass windows and I say, who's going to go out and clean those windows and for how much money? So I think there's a lot of reasons to look closely at it. You know, if this building was somewhere else, I think it would have better prospects. And I'm not completely convinced that the community is, is all on board. So thank you very much.
Don Meskell, the new chair of the Mitchell Field Committee, Mitchell Field steward. When Mitchell Field was operating as a fuel depot for the Naval Air Station, it had a function and a fence across the waterfront. That's no longer the case. Today that fence is gone. The waterfront is used by folks year-round for a wide variety of purposes. Swimming, scuba diving, fishing, shoreline exploration, kayaking, dinghy launching, day camps, nature camps, family picnics, reunions, lobster boat races, dogs enjoying the sunsets, dark skies events, all occur at the waterfront. The field itself is used for a variety of purposes. Band concerts, special events, walking and hiking, running races, solstice celebrations, kite flying, drone flying, and many more things that people like to do in just using the open space. The Mitchell Field Committee has for years evaluated use of the waterfront and long-range plans for its continued enjoyment. A waterfront working group has also looked at how the boat launch should be integrated with all the other current uses. After due consideration, the consensus was that the admin building was an impediment and needed to be removed. The waterfront should be left as open space until the boat launch is built and operating so we can evaluate what the vehicle and pedestrian traffic impacts would be. Would we need to de-conflict beach traffic and boat launch traffic? And what, if any, physical building requirements might be needed? That initial recommendation was communicated to the select board in August of last year and remains unchanged. Take the building down. The proposal for the admin building would completely obviate any future plans for the waterfront and impact current uses. It would be right in the middle of the waterfront in front of the causeway. It includes building a stage on the waterfront side of the building. People don't want a building there, they want open space. I hear that question all the time. I am over at the field year-round and six days, seven days a week in the summer. When's the building going away? Whether the percentage is right, about 119 acres, I don't know, but people don't want to look at it. They want that open space so they can sit and enjoy the water and the sunset. Additionally, the parking proposals that they have would remove the loading and unloading area and vehicular access to the waterfront, which would definitely impact beachgoers. You are correct. We can put five, four, 500 cars up in the east end of the Lower Meadow. That's a long walk from the waterfront for even the uses that you've proposed. There is very little parking right at the waterfront. And I can tell you in the summertime, it's all full all day and nobody's lined up to go in that building. So proposing indoor uses for the building would only exacerbate that. There is very little, and if you want to have a function there, there's almost no handicap parking anywhere. Look at the band concerts. The reason the gazebo is where it is, is we did a very studied look with the Mitchell Field Committee, the rec committee and the bandstand group at the time, and we put the gazebo up where it is because it's close to that large parking area. And the thing they wrestle with week in and week out is where all the elderly and handicap people all want to be, right next to the gazebo. You can't do that at the waterfront. The proposal in here says we're going to block it all off. So what happens to all the kayakers that show up and the scuba divers and everybody else? They got to schlep everything to get down to the waterfront. Most of the uses proposed for this building are indoor. They don't need to be at the waterfront. Well, it's nice to say we're going to enjoy the concert and look at the sunset. It's not a requirement for all the other proposed indoor uses. We're not saying that those are bad ideas. They just don't need to be right at the waterfront. It's just trying to bring more people down where we have very limited parking. And that's what Spike talked about, dispersed parking. We took a hard look at that parking issue and said we need to disperse parking for people that don't, you know, if it's an indoor use, they don't need to be right near the water, they can be somewhere else. And that's what the 30,000-foot look hopefully will do is figure out where, where else that can be done. And I would say, what's important? Are the uses proposed for the building what's most important? Because we don't feel that the building itself is what's important. If the uses are important, for that matter, I mean, there's a building right down the road, it's got a lease signed, hanging out, ready to go. We don't need to figure out where we're going to get water. We don't need to dig a septic field. We agree. We need restrooms. But there are restroom options that don't involve piping water all the way down to the waterfront and getting a septic field. So the committee stands by its original recommendation, put the demolition article on the warrant, take the building down. And, you know, the questions about what's in the hazardous material remediation thing, that's a call to John Cressy who wrote the report. I mean, 3A is more expensive because it includes removal of the building. 2A does not include removal of the building. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Don. Anybody else? Go ahead, Phil.
I'm Philip Connor and I'm from Hartwell. I'm also on the Mitchell Field Committee and a couple of the committees in town.
And Phil, are you not also part of this group?
Yes, I am. There was some mention about water and sewer, about the expense of that. And I had a phone call this afternoon, which I didn't expect, but from Matt Nixon from the oyster seed place that rents from Mitchell Field now. And it was interesting to me because I, I had suggested at a Mitchell Field meeting that we contact them since they were going to put in a well and septic and see if they had the interest in using the well that was already there and somehow splitting the expenses of running that down from that well to their property. And my idea was shot down so fast it didn't make it into the minutes, but the, he hadn't heard about that, that that was an opportunity for him to look into and was glad to hear it and he was going to look into it. He also offered to share his septic with anything that goes on at the admin building. So I don't know whether either one of those opportunities are feasible, but they're there and it would reduce our costs going down the road, however it's done. There's mention about the boat launch interfering with the admin building or the admin building interfering with the boat launch. And the boat launch was designed with the admin building sitting in place and there, I never saw any mention in there of suggestion that it was a hindrance or a problem. They had figured out it's there and they designed right around it. Parking, I couldn't really feel like figure out your, your comments on parking because you talked about that you didn't need parking down there. You would use that space where the building was for open space or recreational space or something like that. And then you talked about needing parking down there at the waterfront. So I couldn't get, I couldn't understand whether you wanted to use that space for parking or not. It sounded like you were doing both. But anyway, there, there is some parking that goes with our, our design. There is some close-up parking down there for handicapping, that sort of thing. And probably the most important thing for us to consider here is, once we tear this building down, it's gone. You can forget about thinking about it anymore. And I, I was, I was really fortunate years ago, I was living in Oxford, Maryland, and there was an old school building there and the town fathers, they were an interesting group. One of them wanted to put in a lacrosse field in town and that was a long time ago and people in Oxford, Maryland had never heard of lacrosse. But anyway, he wanted to put one there. He was a very interesting guy. And so he, he wanted to tear this old building down, this old school down and it just, it was, looked like a pretty neat building. I wouldn't know what we would use it for, but it just didn't look like something that ought to be torn down. And so we gathered, we, well, actually in that case, we did a petition and we went around to the town and a lot of people were willing to sign on, not knowing what they would use it for, but surely we can use this for something. And so we got the petition, we went to carry it to the town. The town decided to consider what we could do with it, come up with a proposal. They would give us the $10,000 that they were going to use to tear it down and give us that money to start our venture if we were going to make it into something. And it, it didn't burst forth onto the scene of all the great ideas that were going to be done with it. There were a lot of ideas floated. A camp using a venue for artists to have shows for classrooms, for a venue for their theater group they had there. Now Oxford is like a tenth the size of Hartwell, at least it was at that point. But people had a bunch of ideas, nothing solid, nothing for sure. And we started forward with that. And over the years, you, you can go to it and look it up online. It's the Oxford Community Center, Oxford, Maryland. There, there's some other, there's some confusion there, so be sure you get the right one. But it, it just caught fire. That's probably not the right word. It took a while and it, it begun to become an important part of that community. And it is a real asset to that community now and lots of things go on there. And if you go to the website, look at the calendar and see, it is booked solid. It's got, I think it's got four, four or six classrooms and a big auditorium and they keep it booked all the time. And it, it just became a real treasure to that community. And if we tear this down, it's gone. The, the location of, of this building really lends itself to this because it's, you're not losing a view because that building is there. You're gaining a view because you can see inside that building or outside the building in the picnic area shaded perhaps. And, and you'll, you'll get the view from there. And so you have the opportunity to enjoy one of Hartwell's best views, but you won't be standing in a parking lot to look at it. So I, I, I think we'd be making a terrible mistake to tear it down. There's no rush to tear it down. I think we should continue to let this plan grow and, and get, develop it so that it can happen. We're glad we did, I think. I, I've seen it happen before. They're not, the situations aren't exactly the same, but they're similar enough to where we could really benefit from it. So I hope you change or change the warrant to allow for partially tearing it down or not just leave it out completely until we move further along. But thank you for your time. But thank you for your time.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Jane?
Yeah. Well, I want to thank everybody who spoke this evening and the group of folks who put together the proposal and the design concept. It is very interesting, and it's creative. And I want to recognize that and share appreciation for you putting the time and effort into bringing something to tonight's meeting that we could understand, respond to. I guess I want to make a couple of comments. Repurposing the admin building at Mitchell Field into a recreation center. As I look at the design and Bob, with your very thorough overview of how the building would function and so on, I don't think it's a recreation building. I think it's an... I think a more accurate name for it would be an event center, which has, incidentally, a pickleball court and some small meeting space and picnic tables. We'll leave the toilet out for the moment. And I say that not only because of how the space is being described in this big, beautiful window looking out onto the water, but the plan for operating this building depends on events. And you have a listing of what they might be, a lot of events and a lot of use on a regular basis. And that's fine. Putting it on the waterfront means that it is going to necessarily, in a variety of ways, some known and some unknown, conflict with the waterfront usage at Mitchell Field. Whether it conflicts with the boat launch per se, whether it conflicts with the kinds of uses that Don described earlier, there's going to be one more set of activities in a structure that's not going to get... Can't be moved. It's not like putting a tent up for a wedding and you take it down when the wedding's done. So, I think that is a big deal. I think that's a really big deal. I'm just going to take a little side note. Does Harpswell need this structure? Whether an event building, what you've proposed to us, does Harpswell need that? I don't think we have evidence that we do. So, that raises the question of the town, i.e. the taxpayers' participation in it. And finally, I've come to the very clear understanding, at least in my own mind, that while it is a very nice building, it is being proposed to be in the wrong place because the admin building already exists there. And it's the wrong place for the reasons of the conflict with the waterfront and the... Should it be developed that way, the... Should there be an endorsement to go forward to develop it? Then, looking afresh at the waterfront and perhaps the whole field is what one group of people would like to do, but looking at the waterfront to determine how it's used once the boat launch is put in and we see what that activity is and what ancillary things might come along with that is precluded, because the prime space is taken up by a building structure. So, that's a concern to me, that it forecloses the evolution of that waterfront in ways we may not understand or even imagine right now. So, I think it's the wrong building in the wrong place on Mitchell Field. We've had a lot of... The surveys of Mitchell Field have shown that it is primarily used by people on the west side of town. Location, location, location means a lot. And the... As a select board member, investing in something that may be used by some people that already use Mitchell Field but be paid for by people who may never go there for anything at all has always been an issue in the town when a Mitchell Field project is proposed. So, I just want to say that. But if we were to, you know, as we've said before about thoughts about using the West Harpswell School, it's a great building with basketball court, et cetera, et cetera, but it's in the wrong place, because people... It's down in South Harpswell. So, that's another location problem that I'm concerned about. So, with that, while I think it's very creative and may or may not be something that an entrepreneurial group of people like you want to do, I don't think it's something that should be done at this location on town property. And I, too, had the concerns Spike raised about, should it fail, what is the town going to do with it? Because we're not in the business as a town of managing property, renting it out, and so on and so forth. So, those are the primary concerns I have, which means I'm still in the position, I suggested last meeting, or whenever, last meeting when we were talking about the warrants, that the warrant should be now to take the building down, have an open space, and let what evolves at the waterfront evolve organically and naturally. So...
One of the first problems I see is anything east of Mitchell Field going towards the islands, County's Harbor. The taxpayers will never vote for anything over there. I can pretty... I know the room. They... It's, you know, they see it as a dog park primarily, which, you know, it is. It's going to be a boat ramp eventually. I'd like to see trap storage there, winter storage for the fishermen in the town, boat storage, that type of thing. I do love the building. I think your concept's fantastic. But I don't think that the money can be raised to do it. Just, you know, if you're looking for grant money, anything like that, look at the news. You know, things are drying up. My wife's in that world, you know, and they're looking at each other, trying to figure what the hell's going on. You know, I've said for years, I want to see the building come down, unless somebody had a, you know, an idea, but I just don't think financially it can be done. I like to report most of it, and some things in there didn't need to be done, but I just don't think it's going to work. I wish I did. I'm torn on this. All week, I've been back and forth, you know, what the hell are we going to do with this place? You know? I'm afraid I just got to go along with Jane, as much as I don't want to. Sorry, Jane, but it, you know, this isn't feasible. In fact, you know, the town and any of the taxpayer dollars running the water down, I think there's an estimate of $70,000, even if you split it with Matt. And then, he talked about letting us use the sewer. How big's his leak field? You know, how big of a leak field do you need, you know, for what you have in mind? How many bathrooms do you need if you get 200 people in there for a concert? Outhouse, there are things to be done, you know, for outhouses down there. You know, the state's got what you see in state parks. You know, they've got a holding tank with a little building on it, you know, they clean up nicely. It could be done without water and without sewer. But I just don't see a way clear that that's going to work. If you want to take that building and move it up the hill, different ballgame, or something similar. But I have to go along with what we have in the warrant, bringing the building down.
So, what this group has done is used this initial framework that we've asked them to do, and they've done it. And I think what their proposal is, is for a building that actually needs to be on the waterfront. It's... The proposals are to enhance the waterfront, not to get in the way. So, I don't know. I don't think it's up to us, frankly. It's owned by the town, it's owned by the people of Harpswell, and that's where the decision should be made, whether we put this on the warrant along with demolition to see which one wants to fly. I don't think it's our decision.
Town meeting date, have your presentation there, have your handouts, you know? It's a ballot vote.
No, it's a floor vote.
It would be a floor vote.
Oh, that's right. Yeah. But set up your... You know, people come in and make your pitch.
And I just want to say, I think, but it is our responsibility to write a warrant and put a warrant before the town meeting.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
At least two of us are agreed that the warrant to demolish it is the appropriate, the right one. I don't know where you stand, David.
But whether to go forward with this proposal or not is... Should be up to the voters, not us. I mean, they've done everything we asked them to do.
They're asking us to give... Also, to give them many more years, several more years to do it, yeah.
Right. At least one more year to get rid of the VRAP issues. You know, it's... I don't...
So, what are you...
I don't think it's our decision to whether to go forward with this or not. They've done what we wanted them to do. I think the people of Harpswell actually own that building, and...
I see what you're saying. I think I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
And they have an opportunity to make their case at town meeting.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It can be done.
Yeah.
Are you voting one way or the other, David?
Could I make a couple? You raised three issues that... I didn't know what they would let me go with my phone.
Better than sitting in the... So, everybody can hear you, not just us.
You raised three questions that we didn't answer, and so, can I try and answer those?
If you want, yes, sure.
One of them was the uses. You said how many... That it could be used for waterfront uses. Well, we came up with uses, and we said a bunch of uses that we thought could take place there, not that will, but could. But you came up with uses not otherwise identified. So, what could go on there that would make it worthwhile tearing that building down?
I don't have an answer for you, Philip.
I didn't think so.
What I'm saying is, what I'm saying that with that space open, over time, with experience of the boat launch, with whether or not there's an appetite for adding floats at the end of the causeway, which was part of the original design, how they evolve, that the waterfront would be limited in its evolution or has changed organically over time with that building remaining where it is, renovated or not, or just as it is, either way.
I think one of the good uses that it could have with the waterfront is to serve as a control point for the boat launch. Another thing that you mentioned was that it is a taxpayer issue, and so, this thing is not... It's intended to be funded by donations, grants, and whatever else, not by taxpayer And so, that shouldn't be something we're talking about here. And it won't cost us anything to wait a little while. I mean, we waited years already, and it's not... It's not... We hadn't spent any money on it, you know, so it'll sit there a little longer. And there was a question about what we'd do with you if it fails, if this thing fails to come about. And if it fails to work out, tear it down then, then spend the money. But don't spend it before that, because we're not asking for any. And so, you know, we've got more to offer, but things to do with it than you have offered to do with the space that it would create. And we're saying, "Leave it there and let us have a chance to let this residence use it."
Thank you for the...
Thank you.
Bob, good draw again. And I guess I just want to repeat, under DEP law, you are not allowed to demo the building until you completely remediate. Sorry.
That's fine.
Completely. So, you can put on the word demolition, but you have to remediate. So, you're now up against this $340,000 cost. And instead of saving the building, we can save you money on that warrant. What I'm telling you is, you, DEP law, because you're over 50 parts per million on the PCBs, you have a cost in front of you before anything can get done. And that's why we're not standing in your way. Go get it remediated, and then you can talk about demolition. So, if you're going to put something on the warrant, put it on next year, because you've got to get through remediation first. I also say, I can understand what you're saying. Does it interfere? But nobody has consistently, over time, put any plan together on the waterfront. There is more uses for this building than there is that distract from the building's use. And if there's an overall plan, it should be built into this with it, instead of just throwing it away. But thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
If I had my druthers, I would take demolish off the warrant and give these guys a year to have this gel and do the remediation and be able to prove that they can actually do this. To have it... I might compromise and say, "Let's put them both on," but I would, you know, we need to have a year to do the VRAP anyway.
I think your opportunity is going to be at town meeting, to make your pitch.
Make the pitch, exactly, exactly.
Very brief. Dorothy Rosenberg, Basin Point Road. I think it would be really important for the town to get in touch with an environmentalist, an environmental lawyer, or have... Because you don't have a codes person who can tell you answers to this, to find out what the situation is with this VRAP, the question of the responsibility for removing the toxic materials before anything else can be done with it. I think you guys need to know what the legal situation is.
Let me just say something, Dorothy. I think we understand that it has to be remediated before it's taken down or before it is renovated. We understand that.
Okay. Because as far as I can tell from this proposal, that's the only financial burden for the town. And so, what's being put before the taxpayers is that responsibility, not anything having to do with a repurposing of the building, which is what you asked us for. So, the demolition cost would belong to the town.
Yes, yes.
And the remediation costs are going to be the town in any case.
Yeah.
So, that's why Bob has been saying, "We would cost you less."
Sorry. Last bit. You can talk about remediation costs and all your little costs, all you want, but there's a fundamental philosophical thing trying to be sorted out here, which is, is the building, even in its new state, the right thing for the waterfront? And so, we can respectfully disagree about that, but I think you need to... The one way to get the answer to that is to put the warrant article up about demolition and make your case at town meeting. That's exactly right. You can't decide it now, David is right about that. We can't decide it by coming back and forth to this microphone. I suggest you put the warrant article up, and let's figure it out at town meeting. There'll be a big debate, there's for sure, and that'll be good. Thank you.
It's going to be a long town meeting.
Mm-hmm. It's been a long select board meeting.
I'm not good at public speaking.
Join the club.
Your name, please?
Frank D'Agostino. I live on Great Island. I go to Mitchell Field regularly, so that's just anecdotal, but love it down there. I will let you know that I was not in favor of the boat launch. It went out to the public, as Mr. Chipman just said, and I think that this should go out to us voters as well. Not you, us. We should decide, just like the boat launch was decided. I didn't like the decision, but that's democracy. So, that's all I have to say.
Anybody else?
I will make the motion that we put this plan on the warrant, along with demolition, if you want to do that way, and have them make their case at town meeting.
I don't second that.
Well, what he's saying is, is to put the warrant on the way it's written. Is that what you're saying?
Well, demolish, but also have these guys be able to have it on the warrant as well. So, it would be one or the other.
We let them... We let them, well, it should be known that it's got to be remediated before it's demolished.
Mm-hmm, yep. Well, all effects would be presented, sure.
But wouldn't people just vote no if they wanted to? So folks can present their proposal, and there will be a yes or no to what you currently have on the warrant?
Could be done that way.
Yes, as opposed to a 50-50, I mean, an unclear outcome, which is very likely, I think, if there were two warrants.
Sure, I just want to know that it's not up to us to make that decision.
Absolutely.
It's the votes.
Absolutely.
It's us up to bring it to town meeting.
Yep.
And then everybody gets to make their case. Bring the lunch.
What they're proposing is that we leave it as it is, and there will be a demolish item on the warrant, and that this group has an opportunity to speak against that and make your own proposal.
Yes.
That's what you're saying.
Yeah. So we'll come out with a decision, so we will come out with a decision one way or the other.
Correct.
Yes.
I can stand by either one.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
Well, I don't think we need a motion.
Leave it as is?
As is, where is?
Yeah.
Yep. All right. I guess we're good then. What's that?
Thank you.
Oh, wow. Seems a little late, but public comment?
I'm Miss Gill, Mitchell Field steward. We talked about two things tonight in a little bit of background. The PFAS testing. We approached Friends of Casco Bay, I did, almost two years ago, and asked them about PFAS testing as part of their in-water testing that they do all over Casco Bay. And at the time, they came back and said, no, we don't currently do that, and Bigelow Labs controls it. And then literally, like, a month and a half or two months later, Paul Plummer came back to me and said, they just gave us 10 test points, and they are going to test for PFAs. So Paul gave we, the Mitchell Field Committee, a choice of three spots. So we're going to do two test points below the causeway, where the creek exits that drains probably 90% of the field. And if we spot something there, then we'll work our way back up and do more PFAS testing. One of the test points is north of the causeway, where Mary meeting shellfish takes their water and discharges it. That's the first one. I approached Cumberland County Soil and Water District a year ago to say, hey, we're experiencing, after the big storms, more erosion along the bluff. And I never heard from them until what you commented tonight. There are some points along the bluff where we have additional erosion, and the ocean is coming up more. So that is great news. Thank you.
Anybody else for public speaking comment? No? Other business, Christie, anything?
You have in front of you a request by Jim Babaski, the elder, to consider a few points when the, if and when the new fire station is built, to incorporate a few things into it. And as you know, change orders are kind of expensive. They need to be thought of ahead of time. So things like running conduit. They don't need to put all that stuff in yet, but having the ability to put it in, I think, is pretty important. So I would like to give it to the Fire and Rescue Committee to see what things they would like to see in it and deal with it before the plans are all drawn up.
And maybe bring it on Sunday, right? Call log charge?
Yeah, could, yeah.
That their get-together?
Sure, yeah, Sunday, yeah, it's an informational meeting, yeah.
Yep.
That just reminded me, we did receive an email from Paul Solzalsky this afternoon. And I did send it to the select board. There are three LDs coming, well, at least they have to, we have to submit comments by next week. One is LD 407, an act to prohibit the use of aqueous film-forming foam at the former Brunswick Naval Air Station. One is LD 400, resolve directing the Department of Public Safety office of the state Fire Marshal to compile a statewide inventory of the film, the A triple F concentrate. And one is LD 222, an act to establish a take-back and disposal program for firefighting and fire-suppressing foam involving PFAS. So he would like the board to go forward.
Approve the letter.
Okay.
Yeah, I saw a move.
To submit comments in support of those LDs.
You guys have seen that letter.
I wanted to make sure that you were all on board with that.
I'm in favor, but I'm sure that we send it.
I seconded and thank Paul for responding so quickly and giving it to us in this time.
Great.
Any discussion out there on this? Nope, all in favor? All right, anything else?
No, I think that's all of it.
In that case, we're adjourned.